Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 8, 2014 meeting of the City-County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting a withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes and there is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one will be allowed to speak unless a board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the district. Therefore, the petitioner may not talk about the specific use. Special use district zoning, however, you must be very specific about the uses and how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda today will require final approval by either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken here today are recommendations that go to those bodies for their consideration. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your comments, we will need your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business is the approval of minutes April 3, 10, 21, and 24. Any additions, corrections to any of those minutes?
No approval.
Motion, Mr. Mulligan, second. Mr. Lamb, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. I'm now calling Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. We've got a few items for consideration on consent. First one being item B1, zoning docket F-1545, and this is a request to rezone about 29 acres from RS-40 to RS-15S. This is adjacent to the Waterford subdivision out in Clemmons off Lassiter Road. We had this set to bring to hearing today, and we've been working with the developer on some issues that came up fairly late in the process with respect to impervious coverage. This site is located within the Aggie River watershed, and this, while the site plan submitted does meet UDO requirements, there were some practical issues that staff identified with the developer that needed to probably be worked through a little bit more. And we did identify those a little bit late in the process, and we've been working with them over the past week to try to get those ironed out. We thought we'd have something ironed out, but as of today, we weren't able to get that done to something that was mutually agreeable. So, we would recommend, they've requested a one-month continuance, and we would recommend that. I know we have some people here in opposition. I don't want them to think the developer's trying to pull a fast one and bring them down here and continue it. They genuinely were trying to get this worked out, and we just weren't able to get something worked out before the meeting. So, we would recommend a one-month continuance to the June 12 meeting.
We have used the automatic continuance, so I'll have to ask, is there anyone here opposed to the continuance request? Seeing none, then...
And just to clarify, this would be the last continuance that there could be?
Correct. The board would have to vote at the June 12 meeting.
Yeah, it'd be heard one way or the other in June. Correct.
Do we approve the continuance request? Second?
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Lyons, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, we'll hear this in June. Okay?
Next item is item B4. It's docket W-3219, and this is a special use permit request for a transmission tower located in RS-9 zoning. You can see the subject property there in yellow on the location map. It's about 6.2 acres on the northwest side of Reedsville Road, just south of Old Blues Creek, Old Blues Creek Road. You can see the church property there to the south, and then the Silver Chalice subdivision there to the north. This is the site plan that was submitted with this request, and it's for 150-foot-tall monopine. Staff has reviewed this. We do believe it meets the findings of fact listed in ordinance. I won't go through each one. They're in your report, but staff does believe this meets the findings of fact and would recommend approval of this special use permit.
Good. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? You're opposed to it? Okay, then we'll have to pull this off of consent then and have a hearing later.
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure, did we have any, I might have got my cases mixed up. Do we have anybody on, signed up on four?
This was four I was looking at. Wicker Brothers Family Partnership.
Do we have opposition to that one?
No. That's the one you mentioned, but that's the one to the...
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Move on. Item C1.
Can we be sure which case, gentlemen? Okay.
This is the other one.
No, that's not...
That was...
That's number three.
Okay. You were talking about number four.
Correct. Yeah, I just, that was the one we...
Mr. Sanchez? You signed up for case number three. That's a different case. Okay. Now, you signed up for the right case. He was talking about a different case then.
Okay.
The Reedsville Road case then. You want to give the address again so we make sure we...
Yeah, this is located on the northwest side of Reedsville Road, just south of Old Blues Creek Road. It's a 6.23-acre site there, 150-foot monopine. This is the Wicker Brothers Family Limited Partnership.
And again, no one has signed up in opposition to this. Is anyone here opposed to this request?
Just to clarify, we are talking about W-3219.
Correct. That's correct.
Well, I just wanted that for record.
Okay. Seeing no one, then...
No approval.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, and second, Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
You...
Next item, item C1. This is PBR 2014-05, and this is a request for utilities. You can see this site located there on the south side of Harper Road. It's a large yellow site, 19.13 acres that's shown there. The site we're considering for utilities is much smaller, probably about a half an acre, located up along the frontage of Harper Road. This is a request from City-County Utilities Commission to install a lift station there at that location to help the sewer system in that area. In this, you can see the site plan there. Harper Road would be to the south in this drawing. Staff has reviewed this. It meets UDO requirements, and staff would recommend approval of this PBR.
No approval.
This is not a public hearing. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C2. It's PBR 2014-6, and this is a request for a private school. This is for the community mosque on the north side of Waltham Street, and they've acquired some property on the south side of Breton Street that you see there in yellow. This is the site plan they've submitted. If you can kind of follow the mouse, you can see the existing house on Breton Street where the mouse is. They're proposing an addition to the backside of that, and they would be using the existing community mosque property for their access and for parking. Folks would enter off of Waltham, circulate around the back. They would be able to drop the children off at the back and then circulate out around the front. The existing parking lot would also be used for staff parking. So, good design, making use of the existing infrastructure that's already in place. Staff has reviewed this. It does meet UDO requirements, and we would recommend approval of this request.
No approval. Second?
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
That concludes the consent agenda.
Next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-3217. Petitioners Roger and Betty Anders, Carl and Lois Anders, Jerry and Goldie Edwards, and Senden Schnodel. And the property is 4.67 acres located on the west side of Mission Road, south of Highway 421, Business 40. And the request is for a special use limited rezoning without a site plan from the RS-9 District Residential Single Family, 9,000-square-foot lots to GOL, General Office Special Use Limited. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. You can see it's located within the pink suburban, excuse me, urban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 2. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow. It's a little less than five acres again, excuse me. And currently, there are six single-family homes located on the property. The northern portion of the site here borders US-421, Business 40. It's within the Mission Road neighborhood here, which is zoned primarily RS-9. There is some additional multifamily zoning for townhomes just further east of the site. Further south of the site, you have Stratford Road and commercial zoning lining that. And then directly to the southwest, you have general business zoning. That was the large Haynes Brands textile plant, which was rezoned last year to general business, special use limited for a pretty wide array of commercial, service, and office-type uses. Aerial photographs showing the development pattern of the subject property. This was before the recent demolition activity, obviously, on the Haynes Brands site. This is the area plans located within the southwest. Winston-Salem area plan adopted in 2009 shows single-family zoning there, development pattern. As far as recommended land use, it's adjacent to the mixed-use recommendation for the Haynes Brands site, and it actually recommends moderate-density residential if submitted in a comprehensive development fashion for this portion that abuts the site. These images are taken on site. This is looking from Mission Road in, looking south. Stratford Road is over to the left. You can see some of the construction demolition activity behind and between these homes there off of Mission Road. And this is looking north on Mission Road towards Business 40. Subject property is these six houses here lining the street, and then you have some single-family homes across the street. Again, the request is for a special use limited general office district, so there's no site plan to review. But in reviewing the case, clearly, the area plan does recommend moderate-density residential, so it does recommend an intensification of the property. This request is for general office. This site is adjacent to very intense zoning, general business, special use limited on several hundred feet there. And because of the following conditions, which I'll briefly go over, this site is really designed to relate to that property and not the single-family residential along Mission Road. It includes multiple conditions designed to provide a sensitive transition to those single-family homes that I showed you earlier, and I'll just go briefly through those conditions. One, there's a maximum building height of three stories. Minimum building setback of 50 feet from Mission Road and the adjacent residential zoning. There's no vehicular access on the Mission Road with the exception of emergency vehicles. Mission Road is a fairly narrow street, has a couple of turns in it, so that was a concern of staff and the petitioner, so that's been made a condition for no access. Also, a 15-foot type IV buffet yard adjacent to the residential zoning and Mission Road would be installed. No signage along Mission Road, and the developers would provide a pedestrian linkage from Mission Road to the GBL zone property so that people, if they wanted to walk to that future commercial, service, and office and employment base, they could do that without having to go back out on Stratford Road. So, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time? Okay. Signed up?
Excuse me. I do need to briefly mention a revised condition. We had, under prior issues of building permits, we, a little bit redundant, we had two conditions for recording of a plat. So, that first condition would just come out, and we would renumber the following subsequent conditions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Signed up as proponent, Doug Stimmel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Doug Stimmel, 601 North Trade Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. Here representing Tim Dockery with Crown Partners, who is the developer of the recently rezoned GBL just to the west of this site. This is really meant to be a continuation of the GBL, but better yet, a transition. GB is more intensive. This is meant really for, to be extremely limited to uses such as office, where people come in at 8:00 and go home at night. They're not there at night. So, it's a transition zone to that GBL. Most important thing, as Gary touched on, is we want to be sensitive to Mission Road. I know these folks here are interested in making sure we don't connect to Mission Road by vehicular access. There's no intention of doing that, so we won't connect to Mission Road at all. Everything will come back through the site and go to the west and through the road infrastructure that's set up with the adjacent property to the rest under GBL. So, we've gone to lengths to add more buffers, more screening, more setbacks than what's required by code to make all of this work and be sensitive to what's going on in the neighborhood. So, I want to assure them that there's no vehicular access that can go on through there other than emergency access. And I know Gary asked whether there'd be any construction traffic coming through. If we need to, we're happy to add a condition that no construction comes through there, but that's not our intent either. So, there'll be no construction traffic coming through Mission Road and these folks' neighborhoods to the east. Trying to tie in and link pedestrian access, I think it's important for the neighborhood to be connected through if they want to come through. Sidewalk-wise, we have a very intricate and detailed sidewalk system in the GBL zoning to the west that'll all tie together. So, pedestrian access, I think, is fairly important, but we're not wanting any vehicles on that side. Be happy to talk to anybody or answer any questions that you might have at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Stimmel? No one else has signed up in support? Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Seeing none, then we'll turn to the opposition. Donald Shaw.
My name is Donald Shaw. I live at 630 Mission Road, 27103. Okay, here's my little map so I can better explain what's going on. I'm speaking for 30 people. I have a petition that I walked around last night, and today have signed up 30 people, which entails 20 homes in the area. Four of the 30, four of the 30 homes in the area are empty. Five that I went to on the Mission Road itself, the main, the main road right here, they weren't home, so I didn't get to speak to them. One person of the 30 homes said that he didn't believe he should sign the petition. He didn't like it, but he didn't believe he didn't, he should sign it because he didn't own the house. So, if you see on this, if you see on this page, everything in blue that I've put are the petitioners that do not want this to happen. We feel that this is going to have a negative impact on the, on the neighborhood. It's a nice, very quiet little neighborhood to be right on Stratford Road. I've raised nine kids there for the last 20 years, and we, the people of the neighborhood really don't want it to change any. The... Give me just a second. The orange listed are the two houses, even of the condos and all, of the two people that I spoke to in the last two days that said they ran it properly. They didn't believe that they should vote. Besides that, every other person that I've spoke to has been against this from Mission Road to the condos of who was there in the whole neighborhood. We just feel that this is a little bit more encroachment into our neighborhood than we, that we feel would be good for the neighborhood and the whole area. The buffer zone we have are a whole lot of natural trees, and we'd like to keep that as trees, not a three-story building for the petitioners that are along this road. Adjacent to the property said they don't particularly care about looking at the back of a building. We're also concerned where they said that there won't be a road except for emergency access, but you know, how things in the city sometimes change. Now, it's a road for emergency access, and five years down the road, they decide that they can't get all the people in and out. What I've heard and talked to people, that's going to be a Walmart over there. They opened it up and spit out more traffic on the Mission Road. We can't pass two by two on this road now. I mean, it's a very small, old neighborhood. We have more traffic than we can, we can take, really. And with the buses that come down through, and it's just too much for the neighborhood. We just feel this is very, very negative impact on the neighborhood. Any questions for anybody?
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Shaw? I guess not. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want to submit that petition? Do you want to pass that, Mr. Norby? Here, I guess. Gary? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to this? Seeing no one, then we declare the public hearing closed. Did they not have a meeting of the neighborhood, of the surrounding area?
No.
Did not? Okay. Comments? Questions? Any board members? Any thoughts? Even the emergency access entrance, is that a staff requirement, or is that their recommendation?
That was our recommendation and becomes a condition on there. So, it couldn't be just, if it got approved like that, it couldn't just willy-nilly change one day. It would have to go back through as a site plan amendment to go back through the whole process like you just had here with public hearings in order to change that condition that'd be anything other than an emergency access.
Is there another access point where you could even eliminate that as an emergency drive or not? I mean, if not, then I understand, but...
I think, of course, everything else would go to the west into the main development. So, I think the idea here was to have an, have a secondary access, and Mission Road was really the only option in that way.
I do have a question for Mr. Shaw.
Yes, sir. Come back to the... Please.
If I, if I understand your points, you're concerned about if this is approved, it'll change the feel of the neighborhood. Was that the feeling if the road is allowed for access other than just emergency, or is it because of the building itself and the natural trees that won't, the number of natural trees that will be lost?
Some of all of it, because everybody, you know, the GBL listing, when the plant was there and all, this, you just don't understand. It's an exceedingly very quiet neighborhood. It's not like going over even in Ardmore, and you hear all this stuff. You come in here, and it's like you're in a sound pod. I mean, it really is. I mean, it's very, very quiet. Unless you hear sirens going up and down even Stratford Road, just the way the neighborhood was, is laid out, you really don't get that much. Now, if you get down at the very end of the street where you're up against the 40, there's very little buffering right there, you hear a lot of noise right there at the street from 40 and cars knocking. But besides that, and up at my house, unless somebody is having a pretty big party, which we've had a few in some of the rental property that was around the house, you don't hear anything. I mean, it's like I'm out in the middle of the country and, you know, very peaceful. The, you have quite a few other kids that are in the houses that, you know, play up and down the street. Traffic is always an issue around the kids. I just don't know, I really don't know how to explain it unless you like come out to the site and walk around and just see. I mean, I've been there for 20 years, and when I first found the house, I just, you know, I didn't realize it was going to be such a nice little quiet and like, almost like a forgotten-about little part of the city, actually. It just has that real old-time feel, and it's just a really nice place to live.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, out of curiosity, you reached the renters of the community, and you reached all of the neighbors in the community as well. Were there, at least that's the impression that you gave a few moments ago, and the 30 folks that you reached in your petition?
Yes, that was homeowners and renters.
Homeowners and renters. Were there any that you did not reach? Everyone was home, so you reached everybody in the community?
No, no. Four homes on the main part of Mission Road, and I'm not talking about the two subdivisions. This right here, this RM12S, no one was home at those apartments when I went this morning to talk to people. Over in this area, there was only four people home. One, like I had, she lives like right here. She said she didn't, she didn't like the idea of this being there and that being changed, but she didn't own the house, and she didn't feel it was her right to say they shouldn't do anything because she didn't own the house. Same as the gentleman, I'll have to look for a second, on the, this corner house right here. He said the same thing. He was a renter, and he said he wasn't for it, but he didn't own the house. He didn't believe he should do it. Over in this, in this neighborhood, the three people that were home, they were all retired people. They said they didn't want any part of the neighborhood itself changing, and they thought that this would, would, you know, make the whole feel of the neighborhood. If you come around the corner and you look, it may be a three-story building, since we don't know what they're even building there, you know, how's that going to be good for the neighborhood? You look at the back of a building, I mean, how nice is that for an actual neighborhood? And that's what this is. This is an old-fashioned, nice neighborhood, and we feel that having buildings starting to encroach into the neighborhood itself, it's not going to be a positive impact. I mean, how could it? You know, does that, I mean, does that help? There's, the 30 homes are the homes that are in Mission Road along the street right here. That's all, I spoke to everybody that was there, including three of the homes in the part that's going, that are rented in this area here. The renters said they didn't want the place to be sold and they had to move. They liked it there. They're, they're with kids, too. They, I mean, they like the neighborhood. Did that explain it or not? I'm not great at doing public speaking. I'm a fixer person. I'm not a public speaker.
That's a question of curiosity. I thought you may have some other people with you today that felt as strongly as you do to...
Just the two other gentlemen that live in the road. He lives, Mr. Bowdenhammer lives, I have to look, I have to get my bearings. I'm not very good at your math thing. He lives at this house right here. He's the first house coming into the neighborhood. Mr. McDowell actually owns two houses right here in the, in the neighborhood. He owns one, and his children own the other. That's where they live. I need my map back. I live in this out right here, this house right here by the Goodmans. They've been in the neighborhood like seven or eight years renting. And like I said, people in this part right here, nobody was home just one morning when I went to their houses. You see the marks, the blue marks were the three people that were home in this development, and all three of them signed the petition and said that they didn't think that that would have a good impact on the neighborhood, too.
Very good, sir. You answered my question, and I'm happy to see some other representation with you.
Yeah, a lot of people said that they would like to come, and they, they came with me, but a lot of people just said, no, they weren't able to come. So...
Mr. Stimmel?
Yeah.
Have you, yeah. Could you...
May the under clock for a second, developer.
Well, I have a question for you first, though. This is the first time, I believe, I remember you coming in here without having a neighborhood meeting.
Well, we had some discussions with the council member in the ward that thought it was a good transitional zone to the neighborhood. So, based upon that, we're happy to discuss it with the neighborhood and sit down and meet with them. We did a tremendous neighborhood meeting when we did the GBL. We thought this was a transition zone for office.
So, you'd be willing...
Three stories can be built residential today, too, and moderate density as well.
So, you'd be willing to hold a meeting and come back next month or not?
Prefer not to. Prefer to hold the meeting between now and the council meeting, and we'd be willing to agree to do that and with the council member's guidance and talk to the neighborhood. I often wonder whether the people signing petitions know that there's no vehicular access or roads or anybody coming through their roads and their neighborhood with traffic.
I know, because I asked Mr. Bestin. He told me that one.
They weren't. You say they weren't, sir?
Yeah.
And my question has to do with what you just said about there being no traffic. The comment was, was shared about how quiet it is, and, and a lot of times when there are persons in opposition is because they think there will be an increased amount of traffic. traffic, and there's safety concerns related to that. I'm sure that's something you thought about, even though there, there was no neighborhood meeting, I'm sure that that, this isn't the first time you heard that.
No.
What are your comments about, about that?
Well, this is going to take less vehicular traffic on Mission, because it's going to take the residents.
Yeah.
Right.
If you follow the land use plan for moderate density, and did multifamily in here that had vehicular access to everything, you'd have more traffic, less quiet neighborhood, and a more intense development. We thought this was a far better alternative with office that accesses all vehicles out the other direction, does not interfere with the neighborhood, and was a much better alternative.
But did you say...
Plus to get home at night.
But you say you wanted some time to speak to...
Tim Dockery, and I live in Dobson, North Carolina, and the address is 321 North Crutchfield Street. We've been good neighbors developing property for years wherever we've gone. I did the Barnes and Noble here years ago, and I bought T.W. Poindexter's land, and we put in Chili's in the deal up near the interstate. And I think when we're done with this development, people will be pleased with what they see. Very sensitive to the gentleman here, and anyone here, with respect to quiet neighborhoods. And as Doug said, I, this, unless the city chooses to get rid of a, an emergency access and open this up, there will, there, there won't be vehicular traffic here. There'd be less traffic with office use than there would be with a multifamily. Some of the, I'm, some of the people that were highlighted have asked me to buy their property, or, so, I'm, some of the people that are petitioners have said, would you buy our property? Now, I don't know who and, and what, I'm just saying that I have suggested that we might, if we could agree to terms, and if we could get it zoned for whatever is appropriate. I've been very sensitive to the city and what works, what makes sense. So, I just, we, we didn't call, they called us, and, so I'm just mentioning that. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it looks like we go out to make a decision here today, or whatever. You know, the, the thing that I keep thinking about this, and, is, anytime you look at a piece of property, you look at, at what's the best thing to go on it, and that includes the neighborhood, as to what goes on. I mean, I really, if, if multifamily was coming here, I would be more upset as a neighbor than I would be as an office complex. Office complex, they're there during the day, they don't party at night, and all that kind of stuff. And, I just, but the problem is, you know, we have 30 signatories in here, or whatever, that, that seem to be against this. I really, of course, hindsight's 20/20, but I really wish that, you know, we did, we had a, had had a neighborhood meeting, but same time, that wasn't done, and they want to go forward with it. But like I say, back to my original comment, there's going to be something done with this property that, you know, that's, it's called progression, and, and things are going to be done. Now, what's going to be the best use of the property? I feel like the best use of the property is what's proposed for it. That's my personal opinion. But I'd like to hear some other comments about it. You know, it's, it's so hard to, to, to go ahead and do this, when you got a gentleman up here that's got 30 signatories on this thing, and he's got two gentlemen sitting over here that are, that are against it. But I, I wish, and I don't know how to, how to say it any differently, that I really believe something's going to be done with this property. And what's proposing is the best thing in my book. Now, where that's going to take us? I need some comments from my fellow members here.
With respect to the residents that are here today, I, I too feel a little torn in that you have had your neighborhood be the same for decades, and then change has come. Change will come inevitably. And I must say that if the change is the one that has been proposed for what is going to happen with this office building, that that would be the least abrasive to your neighborhood's serenity. And as, as moved as I am by the emotion of the gentleman that spoke, I would have to say that I too am in agreement that if this is the change that's coming, perhaps it's the one that you should take, because maybe another one that may come down the road may be, may be much worse.
This one would be hard, a little bit hard for me anyway, because it's not consistent with the area plan, which is something that we put a great deal of amount of time in. So, that would automatically make me waive this one. I'm not going to support it primarily based on the citizen opposition, and the fact that there hasn't been, I feel, a strong enough attempt to meet with the neighborhood to iron these issues out, which is probably what weighs it in for me, and the point of saying that I'm going, I'm not going to support it.
Any other comments, any board members?
Although it's, I wouldn't suggest this as a condition or anything, if this is approved, I'm pleased that Mr. Stimmel has agreed to meet with the neighbors prior to the city council meeting on this particular issue. So, I would certainly suggest to, I'm drawing a blank on your name, Mr. Shaw, that's right, and, and your neighbors, not just the two that are here, but all of your neighbors, to, to contact Mr. Stimmel's office and, and hold him to his, his promise to meet with you, and, and make sure that the issues that you're concerned about are as addressed as they could possibly be. But then it's ultimately the city council's decision to, to approve it or not.
Paul, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, because it really hasn't come up, except for Gary's summary of it, is that there is a type 4 buffer yard that is as a condition as well. So, in addition to the fact that there would be a three-story height limit, RS9, as it is now, has a 45-foot building height, 40-foot height limit, so fairly similar, plus the type 4 buffer yard and no access. I just want to make sure that that's, that's out there. And I think that was part of what got us to the conclusion that this difference from the area plan, which did recommend moderate density residential, which would be an increase in density and increase in traffic. We felt that this could be, in some ways, a less impact combined with that buffer that you would see right there. So, that was, that was sort of what weighed in our minds as we were kind of trying to deal with, what, what did the area plan say?
And a 50-foot setback as well.
Right.
The one thing, a lot of effort was put into doing the buffer and the setbacks and things, but something that's very, very intrusive in this kind of transition is the lighting. And I don't see that addressed in any of the conditions that were done. Was that something that you looked at? If I can ask Doug or somebody to speak to that.
Maybe ask the petitioner.
Yes.
I thought there was something in the ordinance that was built in that prevented light flow onto residential neighborhoods. Am I...
Anywhere where type, anywhere where a buffer yard's required, it requires that there be no adverse impact from light spilling over the property line, but it's not a prescriptive standard like we have in some cases in post-conditions of the 0.2-foot candle at the property line, and those kind of things. It's not really, it's more of a reactive than a proactive kind of thing.
And I think as planning board, where we call, we've talked about lighting standards before, and I think your direction to it, to us, was that, is that that shouldn't be put in on an ad hoc basis there. So, now, if the planning board feels that that's important, and you want to ask the petitioner if they'll consider it, that's certainly something.
Well, yeah, you're right, Paul, again. I appreciate you saying about the buffer yard, because I, I thought about, I see, I'm trying to envision all this in my mind, the buffer yard and the whole, everything concerned or whatever, when you think about what's going to set on this property. But as far as the lighting, what I remember about that was exactly what you said. I mean, we talked about the box lighting, and how it wouldn't be, you know, go over the, the buffer part of it, and, and, you know, it would be cut off.
Well, is there any... Right, but there's nothing, as, as far as a situation like this, if it's not specified, it would be the, the type of lighting, then even if you get the foot candles, you've got a visual flare-type situation.
You have a condition to impose for us, Mr. Stimmel?
We'd be happy to add a condition that says we do lighting with a cutoff adjacent to residential property in Mission Road, if that's helpful.
Yeah, so the full cutoff fixtures...
Yeah, you can get it so it cuts off on that side adjacent to Mission Road and adjacent to residential properties.
Yeah, with the box type lighting, where it goes straight down, and only goes over so far.
Can't see the bowl.
And that's, I mean, that's, that was the, the feature of things you've obviously tried to address.
Sure.
What the concerns were, but that was missing.
We'd be happy to do that as well.
Just for clarification, the typical condition we use is 25-foot tall pole height shoebox fixtures, and no more than a half a foot candle at the property line. Is that...
Is that typical?
Yeah. That's kind of the standard condition we, we use.
When, when the planning board asks.
Right.
Okay. Any other concerns?
And while, while Doug is pretty close now, he's sat down, but he did mention, he did mention a condition for no construction traffic to Mission Road. So, that would be something you want to keep in mind as you're making your motion, if you, if you do.
We don't want any construction traffic there.
Okay, I'll make that as a motion.
Okay.
Including the no construction traffic on Mission Road, including the lighting that Aaron proposed, shoebox type lighting, one and a half candle. You know how to write it up. So, I make that as a motion.
You motion approval of those two additional conditions?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Muggins, second by Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Lyons opposed, so. And, of course, this will go to the city council, and Mr. Stimmel, we certainly hope that you would meet with the neighbors between now and then and discuss this. Thank you.
Next item on your agenda is zoning docket W.3218. And the petitioner is Bethel United Methodist Church. And the site is 4.89 acres. It's located on the east side of Griffith Road, west of Bethel Methodist Church Lane. And the request is for a special use permit for a transmission tower in the RS9 zoning district. Just briefly, you remember the Transmission Tower text amendment that has been adopted in slightly different forms for the county and for the city of Winston-Salem. We have two cases, obviously, on the docket for, for today. One of them was approved earlier on consent, and we've already had two filed for your June meeting. So, we understand there's going to be quite, quite a few coming down before you. And again, this is for a special use permit, it's not a rezoning, the zoning has not changed. There's certain findings that are required, and it's a quasi, quasi judicial action on the level of the city council, but there are separate findings for the planning board, and then separate findings for the city council. This is Legacy's growth management plan located in the yellow suburban neighborhoods, growth management area three, in the southwestern portion of the city. And this is a zoning map, showing the subject property there highlighted in, in yellow. It's currently undeveloped and heavily wooded. You have Bethel United Methodist Church located here directly to the east. You have RS9 zoning further, further to the east in the Mountain Brook neighborhood, single-family housing there. You have Burke Mill Road further to the north, Homestead Hills directly north. Over to the west, you have Griffith Road running north and south, and the Hampton Commons neighborhood located here. Aerial photography showing the subject property, again, it's fully wooded. And the southwest suburban area plan, this was adopted in 2008. You can see it's located within the light tan area, recommended for moderate density residential zoning, kind of an extension of what you have along Griffith Road, the predominant RM8 zoning in that area. Blue would be the institutional for the church there, and again, the yellow would be single-family residential. This is looking south on Bethel Methodist Church Lane, towards Bethel Methodist Church, right here in the background. The site would be over to the right. The site would be right here, behind the church. Kind of a close-up of that, again, heavily wooded with hardwoods. In the distance beyond the trees is the, the Hampton Commons neighborhood. This is within Hampton Commons neighborhood, this is on Victoria Park, looking directly into the site in the background there, looking, looking east. And this is north of the site in the Homestead Hills development, looking south towards the site located here. This is a site plan showing the subject property here, primarily an access road off of Bethel Methodist Church Lane going into the site, a 100-by-100-foot compound located pretty much in the center of the site, with a type 4 buffer yard shown dark here surrounding the site, and a 150-foot tall monopine is the proposal for this development. The ordinance requires, in addition to the buffer yard, it requires there be at least 150-foot setback, a setback comparable to the proposed tower height, which this obviously has, and then an additional 20 feet beyond that for any occupied single-family homes. And, and so it complies with that, that additional 20-foot setback as well. This is just an example of a monopine in another location, and this is not probably what it would look like in this location, because you have some, some tall pine trees here. But just as far as the structure itself, this is a typical monopine type, type structure. Just briefly, I'll go through the planning board findings. The development is in conformity, in conformity with Legacy, although Legacy does not mention specifically transmission towers, typically defers to the area plan. This is not a change in the zoning, and we don't see any inconsistency there. Water and sewer services are available in adequate capacity, that's not really applicable here. It will not need water or sewer. Where buildings greater than 35 feet in height, proposed fire adequate, firefighting equipment is available to reach the site, and that's not really applicable here. Streets and highways, both within the vicinity of development, are such design and carrying capacity, would create a little traffic hazard. That's yes. General layout, design, and development meet all requirements of this ordinance, yes, as I mentioned earlier. And adequate safe, convenient provision is made for vehicular and pedestrian movement on the site. Most of that is not applicable, but to the degree it is, yes. The planning board may also recommend to the elected official additional conditions, and those are listed in your agenda book. Briefly, the elected body findings, that the use will not materially endanger the public health, safety if located where proposed in development according to the application and plan is submitted and approved. Yes, is staff's recommendation. And the use meets all required conditions and specifications, yes. Use will not materially substantially injure the value of adjoining property or budding property, or that the use is of a public necessity, and planning staff's recommendation is for yes. And finally, that the location and character of the use have developed according to the application and plan submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and in general conformity with Legacy, and staff's recommendation is for yes. So, in our opinion, the request does meet the findings for a special use permit. Again, the tower would be 150-foot tall monopine type structure, will have some visual impact on surrounding properties. The developer is required to provide a photo simulation showing what the proposed tower, be it a monopole or a monopine, would look in the context of here, and I believe they're prepared to do that. And also, there would be a negligible increase in traffic. And again, there's no rezoning associated with this. And it would allow for continued wireless service in the general area. And planning staff's recommendation is for approval, and the site plan meets UDA requirements, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Your boss has a question.
Gary, back to the site plan. If you could clarify what the notes mean there, because I'm, I, I see the, kind of the bubbles that are kind of showing the existing mature trees which are labeled there. And there's also a note that says existing trees to be removed is required, but the arrow is pointing to the area that looks like it would be cleared to create the compound and the road to it. Do we know... to create the compound and the road to it. Do we know whether the petitioner's intent is to retain those trees that aren't needed for the compound and the, and the access?
I do not, Paul. We need to defer to them.
Okay, so that's probably something to ask the petitioner then.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
Could I see the, the color picture you had of the example again?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, keep in mind, that is not.
I know, I know, it's an example. I, I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. You have any questions or?
I just wanted to see it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Gary. Brian Pierce signed up as a proponent.
Good a- good afternoon. Brian Pierce, 701 Green Valley Road, Greensboro. I'm with the law firm of Nexon Prud. I'm here on behalf of American Towers. He's the tower company. I've got a slideshow that I'll put up, and, and just for clarity's sake, in this, I've got the photo simulations, so I can show those to you as we get through it. Also, to go ahead and address the question about the trees being retained, there's a Type 4 buffer yard that's required as part of the compound, so that's, that's shown on the plan. What American Towers does is they, they acquire 100 by 100-foot lease area. So we've planned and prepared for the, the leased area that we can control. The, the property outside that, we can't. But with that said, this issue, I believe, came up earlier this week, maybe, and we're going to work on something to, to clarify what exactly will be retained. But I don't know that answer. I think it was yesterday that it actually came up. I don't know of any, any plan to remove any of the trees. American Towers certainly does, so it'd be if anybody was the, certainly does not have one. If anyone would, it would be the property owner.
Did you notice, Chris, you were making, have a comment?
What I was going to say is, you know, as with any new ordinance, we've already found a, an issue with the ordinance, and we're going to be working to perhaps resolve that. We were already to the point with this one that, I don't know what we can do. The, the way the ordinance is written for the monopine towers, it says monopine towers or any tower designed with the appearance of a tree shall only be located within existing stands of trees. Well, in this case, they're leasing 100 and 100 area. There's not going to be any trees there, but it, the context that, that 100 by 100 compound is located in is certainly within a stand of trees. But there's no guarantee that tomorrow or two years from now that the property owner who still controls the rest of the property could come in and clear cut that. So something we're going to have to work through. But don't, they are, they are in compliance with what the ordinance says as of today, if this were approved.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And just also, I would mention that the, your new ordinance requires there to be a neighborhood meeting. That neighborhood meeting occurred on the 5th. We've provided a summary. I was not there, but Dave Pachella with my firm was. We've provided a summary of the meeting to the staff, including a list of the individuals who attended. There were three requests that were made at the end of the meeting. Bobby Lynch requested that we address an inquiry regarding potential interference with medical alert devices at a nearby assisted living facility. We addressed that concern with Mr. Lynch and haven't heard anything back. Ms. Melina Petrie asked that we send the site plan. We did that. And finally, Mr. David Gelli and the Seelys requested that we send the compound vegetation species information, and we did that. And we got an email back from Mr. Gelli on that, saying he was appreciative of the, the information. This is a slideshow and.
Excuse me, what was that last one, Brian?
The last one had to do, they wanted a, to see what the compound, what would be part of the buffer yard, what vegetative species would be planted. And that's, that's part of the plans. We've already got prepared. So we provided that plan.
Thank you.
The, the need for towers and why you're getting ready to see more, and you've, you've probably heard some of this already as the ordinance was passed, more Americans are owning smartphones. Just breeze through these statistics and get to the, to the site-specific stuff. Now, 85% of American adults own a mobile phone. There's a statistics, which isn't in the slideshow, but from November of this past year in Guilford County, 77% of the calls to Guilford County 911 were made on cell phones. That number, and I, I don't know Forsyth County's number, that number's now being tracked by the CDC as a public health issue because the pub, the CDC recognizes that so many people just carry cell phones that they need to have that, that access to cellular coverage in order to call 911. By 2016, 1.4 mobile devices for each person in the world. Currently, 1 in 3 traditional U.S. landline users have switched to wireless only. This is all causing this need for coverage. You, you see these just.
Could you go back and quote me that last stat once more, please, on the?
Happy to. One in three traditional U.S. landline users have switched to wireless only. People are getting rid of their home phones in favor of cell phones. These show how much text messages have gone up since 2001, and you see it's an increasing amount. Subscriber connections have increased. Data traffic has increased. We don't use phones really, and that much to talk on anymore. We use wireless coverage for everything, for texting, for smartphones. I know with a three-year-old child, it's hard for us to go out to dinner if we don't have someplace he can play with his iPad. That iPad and internet is our savior that allows us to eat. It's, it's, it's sad to say, and, you know, it's, as a, as a three-year-old, and my child's on the autism spectrum, it's, it's amazing what he can do at three on it. And it lets us get in places that we wouldn't be able to get otherwise. This is just an overview of the map showing the site in this area. Here again, aerial. Okay. Now, this is the photo simulations. This is a, a view. For me to read the distance, but you can see it on the map. You're, this is the tower right here. This is the monopine. You can barely see it. Alternatively, same picture. This is the top of the monopole. We, we provided photos of both monopines and monopoles. We were requested that the plan be a monopine. Our client is willing to do either monopine or monopole. We'll leave it up to you guys in council to decide what it is. We were asked to provide the photo simulations of both, so I've got both. Another angle. This is the top of the monopine right here. There's your monopole. Again, different angle. There's your monopine and your monopole. Personally, I, I think the monopoles are actually harder to see. I'm, I'm more of a fan of those, but I'm not the decision maker. These are just coverage maps. This is the site plan. There's your vegetative cover we put in here. This is what we submitted. This, this shows just that with the mona, with the monopine, you've got the four antenna levels, so there is plenty of room for co-location by other users. Another issue that came up at the neighborhood meeting, and I don't know what, what's going to come up today, but was an issue regarding RF emissions. And the North Carolina General Assembly has recently enacted a statute, and let me give you the exact site. But what, what the statute actually says, and this is in the wireless telecommunications facilities portion of the statutes 160A dash 400.51A, states for purposes of this part, public safety includes without limitation federal, state, and local safety regulations, and here's the important part, but does not include requirements relating to radio frequency emissions of wireless facilities. What, what this means is, as, as a board and as a city, when you're considering the public safety issues to do with towers, I defer to your legal counsel, but to me, it means that you cannot consider any RF emissions in the safety. The, the science is out there that there is no safety issue, but we don't even need to get into it. In fact, these towers use a portion of 1% of the permitted use. So there's, the emissions just don't happen. That, that would be, from the science that I've seen, a myth. However, I'm not an RF scientist, so I would just ask that you, you do not consider any of that information, if, if that's an objection. Otherwise, I'm not aware of any issues with the site, but I'll be happy to address any that are raised by anyone in opposition. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
One of your slides says that you've got 113-fold increase in demand between 2009 and 2016. I think that's what it said, 113 or something like that.
Here, let me get back.
Yep, 113. Need 113 times the volume of data traffic. Are we going to have a, a hundred times more poles than we have now? Is that what we're going to have to be able to meet demand in 2016?
I don't think you're going to see that many more poles, but you're going to see more. You're going to have to. And you, and you see them around the state. You see different kinds. It's, I don't have this slide in here, but if, if you look at what the trigger was in really 2006 with the number, where you see the text messages and other things coming up, if anyone knows what happened in 2006, that was the advent of the iPhone. And it is amazing. I've got a slide. Actually, it's in the other slide. Let me pull it up to the Wicker site that shows it. On data traffic, I guess it was 2007. You see the megabytes and billions of data. And these are, you see, we've got a site to this. So Apple's done pretty well for itself.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Any other questions right now, any board members? Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Say none, and we'll turn to the opposition. Mr. Sanchez?
Name is Louis Sanchez, residing at 360 Luzell Drive in Winston, 27103. It's the prop, uh, thank you, Chairman, and the planning board for letting, letting me speak this I'm here today to voice my opposition to this project. Okay, as you see the diagram, I live right here in this home, within a very short distance of the boundary of the proposed site. And I have some concerns. My concerns have to do with health, the health impact of individuals living near towers of this nature. From what I heard this afternoon and at Monday's meeting from the other council, is how there are going to be many positive results to this tower. And in terms of the negative impact, saying that the emissions are going to be very low, and there's going to be no health impacts, impact to the community. And doing my own research on the internet, I was able to come up with, you know, a lot of information that details specific impact of these admissions from these towers. I'm going to read some information that I have here. Cell towers are considered more harmful to people, particularly those living within the radius of 500 meters. That's only 547 yards. I live probably around 200, 200 feet or so, or maybe 150 feet from the boundary of that tower. As they continuously emit electromagnetic radiation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, towers emit radio frequencies or RF frequencies, like you heard earlier, a form of EMR, which is electromagnetic radiation, which is essentially the same frequency radiation as microwaves and microwave ovens, for a distance as large as two miles. Low levels of radiation emitted by mobile phone towers, like the monopine that's being proposed, are harmful. Scientists at the School of Public Health of Harvard University say that the radiation from cellphone towers is a serious health hazard. Studies have shown that low levels of radiation can cause brain tumors, cancer, depression, miscarriage, insomnia, Alzheimer's disease, apart from damaging cell tissues and the DNA of people. People living close to mobile towers will have disturbed sleep, headache, and their immune system could be affected. The nearby apartments and houses could become very hot. Television displays could show flickering images. I'm reading from a report that was on a blog that was created by Dr. M. Surish. A, a French study, this is a particularly interesting study. It was a French study conducted among people living within 300 meters of the cellphone towers, shows an increased incidence of tiredness within 300 meters, headache, sleep disturbance, and discomfort within 200 meters, and irritability, depression, loss of memory, dizziness, and libido decrease, among others, within 100 meters. It is worth noting that the French telecom giant Orange, that's the name of the company, Orange, suspended operations at a school cell tower site in Paris after eight cases of cancer were confirmed among children in the district. Moreover, a French local council prohibited erection of the cell towers within a radius of 300 meters from the schools. Multiple, multitude of other studies shows the incidence of adult brain tumors occurring within 400 meters of a cellphone tower. The, the elderly are more susceptible to the RF emissions of a tower of this nature, as well as children and infants, and the fetuses of pregnant women. The thinner skulls of kids and rapid growth rates make children more susceptible to the tower's waves. Okay, cellphone towers in the United States are most lenient and least protective in the world. U.S., the U.S. allows between 580 to 1,000 microwatts per square centimeter, which again, is the highest or is the most lenient in the world. And there are various studies that I've came across that I can point out to anyone who requests. So these studies have revealed that frequent exposure to these RF radiation, or RF radiation can lead to health-related problems ranging from chronic fatigue to DNA, DNA damage, like I just mentioned. Research done by Mount Shasta Bio Regional Ecology Center in California revealed that even low levels of RF radiation, under low levels of RF radiation, there is evident damage to cell tissue and DNA. These, these radiations also reduce the competence of the immune system. Leukemia is one of the major illnesses among people living in the vicinity of a cellphone tower. A study by Dr. Bruce Hocking from Australia revealed that children living near cellphone towers had double the risk of childhood leukemia compared to those living at least seven miles away from the towers. Problems like eye cancer, miscarriage, cardiac arrest, and brain tumors are also common health risks living near cellphone towers. Sleep disturbance, like I mentioned, chronic fatigue, irritability, memory loss, and infertility are among the other problems. It also affects animals and plants as well. I mean, that's the research I've done. That's what I come up with. I'm highly concerned about this since I live so close to the projected site. And, you know, there are others that feel that way. I didn't get a petition out. But, you know, lawyers are here representing American Towers, and, you know, and of course, they're going to be saying all the positive things about a tower. But there's another side to the towers, and I see a lot of harm. And I propose that, I'm, I'm, you know, I would hope that this tower doesn't go through. I'm not against towers, per se, but smack right in the neighborhood. I'm not against towers per se, but smack right in the neighborhood where it impacts people, you know, especially the most vulnerable, vulnerable people, the elderly and the young and the fetuses, that's something else. That's an entirely different ballgame, which I'm not in agreement with. And that's, that's why I wanted to say this evening, and I want to thank you all for your time. Any questions?
Yeah, what's the dates on those studies? Do you have those?
Yep.
Now, of course, we're told we're not supposed to consider that, right, Paul?
Right. I guess I want to just kind of give a little caution to everybody there because I think what the petitioner said, although unfortunately, we don't have our own attorney staff here, this subject of what is on and off limits for a local public body to consider has come up before, particularly at the county commissioner's consideration. And I know the county attorney had weighed in, weighed into it. This, of course, is in the city, but the, the subject of federal and state law prohibiting local governments from making decisions and regulating cell towers on the basis of RF emission, health risks, is, as I understand it, is off the table. So, you cannot make a decision based on the health effects on that. And what I would advise Mr. Sanchez perhaps to do is to, between now and the, and the city council hearing, to contact the city attorney's office and just confer with them because it will be under a different set of ground rules that the city council hearing occurs. It will be a quasi judicial process, sworn testimony, and I just would want to make sure that, that he gets clarification from the city attorney, whether the city attorney would even rule that that testimony would be kind of off limits there. So, so not, not that, not that I'm trying to discredit what, certainly what the concern is, but my understanding is that federal and state law doesn't allow a local body to take that into consideration. So, perhaps one question-
I'm just retract my question, and I'm ready to discuss the RF thing.
But perhaps one question asked Mr. Sanchez is, does he have any other concerns other than the health issues about, about this proposal that could be considered as-
I do, I do. It was discussed before about vegetation, removal of vegetation in area. Now, if I, I'm not an expert in, or engineer of any sort, but if I look at this, I look at this diagram right here, as it exists currently, there are trees in every single square inch of that place right there. And if you're going to build the structure and put the, the monopine in this area, I'm assuming this area is going to be all cleared of trees as well as the center spot. So, as far as removing vegetation, that-
I don't think that circle means it's cleared, sir. I think that just means that's the area that has to be set back.
Yeah, circle is the set back, right.
And now, it could be cleared, don't get me wrong, but that's not what that tells-
I mean, to me, I'm no expert, but to me, I mean, you have to, I think, clear some trees to make that possible. And my other concern is about property values. The trees that exist there are trees that, of course, lose their leaves in the winter. In the summer, with this pine, it's a 150-foot-high monopine, it's going to stick out normally, but in the winter, when those trees, other trees lose their leaves, that thing is going to stick out like a sore thumb. Now, me personally, if I go try to purchase a property within an area that has a monopine, I'm looking the other way because it's, to me, it's not very pleasing, and I know it has an impact on future real estate value of that property, and I'm sure others feel the same way as well, you know? So, 150-foot structure that's not natural, that's adjacent to a property, I believe has a direct impact on, on the property value.
Thank you. Other thing, sir, we've been considering the future, no phone service would have a direct impact on the property value, too.
Right, but, you know, I mean, you know, this day and age, I mean, you know, like the speaker earlier said, I mean, a lot more usage of phone service throughout the country and throughout the world, you know? But, you know, like I said, I'm not opposed to these towers in general, but right in a neighborhood where you have, you know, homes surround, almost completely surrounding the structure, that's a different ballgame altogether. I'm really concerned about that. And I think emphasis should be, I know, you know, RF frequencies, you know, apparently are off the table, but that is a concern of mine, as well as property values and the, the unpleasant sight of the towers.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, sir?
Yeah, questions? Mr. Sanchez? Okay, how much time we have left?
One minute and 56 seconds.
Anyone like to use that time? Ms. Donigan?
I'm not, Mr. Sanchez.
Okay. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Well, still a minute left.
Is it possible to have somebody hear me out at the council meeting, or is that not part of the procedure?
No, you'll be able to-
Yes, there will be a public hearing, but it can only be by sworn testimony. So, you can get up and, and it would have to be on things that are relevant directly to the findings, the four findings that the council has to make there. And the staff can show you what, and I think it's in the staff report, what the, what the four findings are. So, it would have to be testimony that is directly relevant to that. And what I was suggesting is that you discuss ahead of time with the city attorney to confirm whether or not you can even bring up the RF thing. And I think the, I think my understanding from what I've heard, different attorneys, including the county attorney, talk about is that a local government body cannot consider those issues in deciding for or against one.
Right. I mean, very interesting, but still, it is a concern of mine, as well, it should be a concern of every single person who lives near a proposed tower like, like this, so. I mean, I understand the rules and all that, but is there a contact number for-
We can catch you that. I can give it to you right now if you want it.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time, Chairman and Board-
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Say none, then we'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is the first time we're going through this with this new ordinance, but I, I just want to point out that the photo simulations that were used, the existing tree coverage in that area around the tower appeared to be a factor in helping to minimize the visual impact of that. So, I know, I know the petitioner is, is talking to the property owners to clarify whether it's the property owner's intent to, to maintain the trees in that area, but I think that probably would be very helpful if those photo simulations are going to be relied on to evaluate the impact, the visual impacts.
Can the trees remaining, the trees remain, can that be a condition?
That's, one of the issues that we have with the way the ordinance is constructed is the applicant is American Tower, and they have already entered either into a contract or they already have this area under lease. So, what they have submitted for is the lease area, so we don't have any control on the context, the surrounding wooded area where this tower is located. That's part of the, one of the, the fallacies or, that's the mistake in the way the ordinance has it as written now. So, we, you couldn't impose a condition upon property that's not part of the application, so to speak.
Yeah. I mean, the only thing you can do is to require operators to buy larger tracts of land.
We have some ideas on how we are, we're going to try to work with this in the future, but I don't know how quickly we're going to be able to get this issue resolved.
Or maybe have some kind of a vegetation easement, preservation easement-
Right.
Any comments, questions?
Because the actual tower site, best I remember, what, the ones I've seen, is like a 50 by 50, 50-foot square or something like that. I mean, it's not a very large area.
I think this one's-
Wow, it's 100 foot, but, but I'm just talking about the fenced-in area that actually, where they put them. So, I believe what you said or whatever, maybe they could come up with some, some trees.
I have found this issue bewildering from the get-go. I mean, it's evident, we all use our cell phones and a lot of us use smartphones, and the need is there. I understand, but on the flip side of it, I understand the neighborhood's concerns. I will say that I have to find, find these far less visually disturbing than the lattice style. I mean, that's definitely a step forward from those, those big things, so.
And I will say this, I have, where I live, back years ago, I didn't have service at my house, and it was, I had a landline at that time, and it was, it is a pain, it is. And it could, you know, if you had an emergency situation, it could, and, and, you know, the thing about it is, is the public is demanding this or whatever with all the, the technology and stuff that's taking place. I mean, we got to, we got to figure out, you know, how to give these people service, and the only way I know to do it is to build towers at this time. On these days, they'll come up with something you won't even see. Until then-
Unfortunately, towers got to go where the people are-
Yeah.
Which is in residential neighborhoods.
And, you know, I just, I really pray, really appreciate Mr. Sanchez coming down here and speaking to us or whatever, but I, I'm going to have to vote that we approve this, for approval.
I'd just like to make one comment. I'll second that. Okay. And, but I would, my major concern, I mean, cell towers are now just like chlorinated water and septic tank, not septic tanks, but a public sanitation, you know, sewer, sewer, is what I'm trying to go. And, you know, it's, I mean, that's what it's like. So, you know, we, we've got to figure out how we're going to implement it. We've spent a lot of time with that already, and we come up with some plans on how to implement that. But then, my major concern is that if we, if, if we don't approve these things, if they meet all of the things that we've set up, all the restrictions that we, if we start denying one here and, you know, not, you're going to end up with your most vulnerable communities, your most vulnerable neighborhoods are going to get all the cell towers. So, come up with the, come up with the rules, and whenever the provider meets the rules, approve them. I mean, that's, that's my major concern is that-
I remember-
Are not consistent in our application, not consistent in our approvals on these things.
Exactly. Those are good examples. And the other example that, that I remember is the Duke Power Transmission Towers. Nobody wanted to live close to those because of the static, I mean, the, you know, whatever they put off.
Magnetic fields or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it feels, and, you know, people have, they don't even think about it, I guess, now, so.
I think similarly to Clarence, most of the time, especially this time. And in particular, on the, on the, on the page with the conclusions of the analysis, it reminds us that we have been given the rules. These are the conditions under which it should be acceptable. Now, along with that, we do have to take into the, into consideration the neighborhood concerns. But if we conclude that the, that the transmission tower will not negatively impact the neighborhood more than we presume that it would, and in this case, the only thing noted as a negative is the visual impact, however, when we looked at the simulation pictures, it wasn't that. It didn't stand out as much as a sore thumb as it might if there, if the trees weren't, weren't visible. So, I'm comfortable voting in favor of this. But at the same time, I do feel like each case does merits that we look at it and we hear from the concerned citizens.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mulligan, seconded by Mr. Lamb. Any further discussion?
I do have another question. I'm sorry. How will it be determined in this particular case? What, I say that it's an option for either a monopole or a, what is it, monopine?
Monopine.
How will that determination, which one is going to be made? Is that made by the, by the petitioner? Is that made by the council?
They've requested monopine in this particular occasion. I think, yeah, the petitioner's proposing monopine.
Correct.
But they're willing to switch it to monopole if council so directs or if the planning board so recommends. Of course, the ultimate decision would be the council, but-
The petitioner actually prefers monopole to monopine. However, we thought your ordinance leaned more towards monopines, so that's what we've submitted. When it goes to council next month, it'll be put in front of them, and they can do whichever of the two they, they choose.
If it's my neighborhood, I'd go with monopole, I believe, but anyway.
I'd want to go back and review that language if it, if it acts like it's preferring monopines because I remember when we discussed that, I, I mean, I personally think monopines are actually more obtrusive than monopoles.
I think it's just set up in the hierarchy of how they're laid out. You have the stealth towers, and the monopines are considered a form of stealth tower, and then you have the monopoles, and then you have the lattice. So, I guess probably just the way it's laid out, the presumption is that the preferred is monopine.
But the way we've set it up, isn't the monopole, in the mona, monopine, available to be placed in areas that the monopole is not?
No.
I thought it was easier for the tower operators to get-
There's just some different height requirements.
Monopine can be 200 feet and the monopole 150 or something like that, isn't it? Those are different height limitations, I believe.
There's some height considerations into it, but not, I mean, it's, all towers are allowed in all districts with the exception of the lattice towers, which you have to be, I could look, but it's probably HB and GI, LI, those kind of things. But everywhere else, it has to be either a monopole or some type of stealth tower, slick stick, monopine.
And actually, I'm remembering now during our discussion of it, I think we added that language that monopines only made sense if they were within the context of an already wooded area.
Yeah.
So, so because, I mean, I've, I've seen, and we've all discussed, examples of monopines in other communities just stuck out there all by its little lonesome, and it doesn't look like anything natural.
Right, right.
So, so I think we had added that language, and so I guess I go back to if, if the effect of the wording in the ordinance is that we're not going to be assured that those trees that made it make sense are going to still be around, you know, that's probably something we need to go back and revisit.
Do we need to modify our motion to incorporate the option for the petitioner to offer monopole versus monopine?
Or if you want to incorporate that into your motion, that you recommend that, but obviously, it'll be the, the final decision will be up to the council.
The council's going to make that decision. We'll put that, we'll let them make that decision.
Okay. So, we have a motion now for approval of the monopine as proposed here. That's the motion on the floor. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? If it's unanimous, okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for jumping in again, but before anyone leaves here, and for anybody who's watching out there, I just want to really emphasize that the next hearing with the city council is a quasi judicial hearing with sworn testimony only. And one of the, of the requirements of a quasi judicial hearing is nobody can have any communication with any of the council members beforehand, whether it's petitioner or concerned citizens. They can't call and, and expect the council member to be able to entertain listening to them or, and all that. The council, council members are prohibited from having what's called ex parte communication except during the actual council public hearing. So, just wanted to point that out for everybody.
And to build upon that, the gentleman who spoke in opposition, Mr. Sanchez, mentioned that he didn't have a chance to go by and get a petition up or anything like that. The other thing with a quasi judicial public hearing is no hearsay information is allowed. You have to have, you have to be there to testify. So, if there are other neighbors that you have that are in opposition or folks who are listening are in opposition, they actually need to be at the hearing to testify. You cannot submit, you can submit a, a-
Petition.
Petition, but it can't be considered as part of the decision-making process.
Yeah. Comments become potentially liable, slander, and all those kinds of things, too, so.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
All right. Thank you. Committee reports. Anything to report?
There was no text amendment team meeting this last week.
All right. Staff report.
Okay. Not much to report on, other than several of us were in Atlanta for the American Planning Association Conference, so we got to receive that planning award for Legacy 2030. And again, thank you to the board for all of your hard work and meeting time and discussion about all the issues that helped frame that. And you would have been very proud about the video that was produced. The APA produced a two-and-a-half-minute video about it that was shown to the 5,000-some-odd people who were there at the awards luncheon, and so that kind of, it kind of explained it, but they did a really, really good job on that. And the award itself is, is sitting in our office if you want to, if you want to see it. But when we get the video, we'll, we'll bring it to one of our meetings so that you can take a look at it. take a look at it. And last thing I want to mention is, I, I just, this is a plea to you all from the staff to kind of help us in, in a way that you can help us, is it's really important for us in advance of a, of a meeting to know if we're going to have a quorum. So please, 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 it only takes five seconds to say yes or no. Type in yes or no to one of Shelley's emails so that we can know in advance whether we got any issues with a quorum. So please help us on that, we really appreciate it.
Well, tell us who's not responding, and we'll give them a hard-
Yeah, right. Take them out behind the woodshed.
That is.
And let me make a comment also about that award. I look forward to seeing the video, and congratulations to everyone. And yesterday, I was at the Winston-Salem Foundation Community Luncheon, and, and that was acknowledged as well. And during the presentation by the keynote speaker, he even had a slide on his PowerPoint presentation talking about Legacy. So it's good that we're, we're getting coverage all over the state and the nation about the great work that you all are doing.
Now, you mentioned we have two cell tower cases next month. What else do we have? What's the workload?
Several rezoning cases. We've got probably eight rezoning cases and a couple of PBRs, and I think a subdivision?
And we don't know yet, because the deadline is until Monday, we don't know whether, yet, whether we're going to get any general use rezonings.
Plus one we just continued as well.
If you're getting a flood of cell tower applications, are we got a text amendment working?
We haven't made it that far yet, I don't think. We, we've kind of kicked it around amongst staff, and we already knew we were too far down the road to tackle it with, with the cases that were before you today, both the one on, one on consent and the one you heard the, the hearing on. But I don't know that we have a resolution at this point. We have not started any text amendments. So it, we may be able to handle it through conditions in the interim, but we need to get something addressed somehow that would take the onus on us having to work through the issue, would clearly state what would have to happen.
Okay, anything else? Anything for the good of the order? Any board members?
I'd like to make a comment for-
You sure?
I don't know who picked these pictures out for our agenda book, but I thought this one for this much was exceptionally cute and beautiful. Little lambs, and I want to thank whoever picks these out. Every month, we have some interesting pictures, and it's great. And I know all these are made in the, this area of the country, in South County, I would take for granted, so.
Yes.
I want to thank whoever does the pictures and makes, and puts this book together, it's great. And with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Taking all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We're adjourned.